Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brief moment of silence, please. Thanks, everybody. I'll turn to staff and ask if there's anyone signed up for public comment.
Nobody has signed up for public comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll move right into our first item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, consistent of only the minutes from October 27, 2025. Were there any edits or requests for edits?
I made one edit, so therefore I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Perfect, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Awesome. And without any questions, all in favor of approval of the minutes from the October 7, 2025 mayor and town council meeting as edited, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I think we were all present. Okay, great. So the consent agenda is approved. Move on to our first of two items of new business. The first is to consider, discuss, act on the proclamation for municipal government works month. I believe this is the exact same verbiage used almost every year, but I will read it again since it's only one of two open session items on our agenda. Proclamation goes as such, whereas the town of Sykesville was incorporated in 1904, and whereas Maryland is home to 156 other municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials, and whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Sykesville is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by providing useful and valuable services, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, and explore. Now therefore, we, the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville, do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League in proclaiming November 2025 to be Municipal Government Works Month in Sykesville. I'll be looking for a motion to approve unless there's any need for debate or questions for staff. Okay.
So moved.
Thank you. So the motion, thank you, is the motion is made by Councilman Keenan and seconded by Councilman Schofield. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion to adopt the proclamation is unanimously passed. Our next item of new business is to consider, discuss, act on a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month, and I will proceed by reading that proclamation. Whereas Native American Heritage Week was first recognized in 1976 and was expanded to Native American Heritage Month in 1990, the fourth day, Fourth Friday in November, was designated as the Native American Heritage Day in 2009, and whereas Native American Heritage Month is observed across the United States to recognize the rich histories, the vibrant cultures, and enduring contributions of the many tribal nations and indigenous people who are the original inhabitants of the land and whose descendants continue to shape and strengthen our community and nation. And whereas the United States government officially recognizes 574 tribes in the contiguous 48 states in Alaska, and whereas Native Americans have demonstrated extraordinary service, sacrifice, and strength throughout history, including the United States military, where their contributions were instrumental to the Allied victory in World War II and remain a symbol of resilience and patriotism. And whereas Native communities continue to thrive, innovate, and lead in fields such as environmental stewardship, public policy, science, art, education, and more. Indigenous knowledge systems have long promoted sustainability, community wellness, and a deep respect for the natural world. And whereas Native Americans have long called Maryland home before the first American settlers, the town of Sykesville celebrates the culture and history of all Native peoples, including members of the Maryland state-recognized tribes, the Piscataway Indian Nation, the Piscataway Canoe Tribe, and the Aka Hanak Indian Tribe. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville that this month of November 2025 is hereby proclaimed as Native American Heritage Month within the town of Sykesville, and all residents are encouraged to learn about the lasting legacies of the original inhabitants of the United States. And looking for adoption of the proclamation unless there's any comments to be made?
I don't know how I missed it earlier, but.
I just saw it.
Yeah, you just saw it, so did I. I moved to amend the document to put the word remain in, and then we moved.
Sounds good. So we, all right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor of adopting this proclamation as minusculely amended. To add a letter to the word remain, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. So once again, we have unanimously approved, unanimously approved a proclamation, and this time for the recognition of National American Heritage Month. That brings us to our announcements and reports, and I will begin with the first announcement that the next meeting is Monday, November 24, 2025, should we happen to have a, an agenda worthy of bringing to the public. We have volunteer opportunities available as a crossing guard and on the police auxiliary. Please email town@sykesville.net for more information about volunteering with the town. We'll begin with staff updates. Turn to Joe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just wanted to bring everybody's attention. So the area of Oklahoma Avenue that we've been using for events has been widely used, so there's been several weekends where we've had events being held. As far as I know, all the events have gone off very well with no issues. We are starting to get questions as to why we're closing the street down for the entire weekend, if it's only Saturday for a few hours or something along those lines. We've been telling everybody, again, we're testing out this area to see if it can be used a little bit more pedestrian-friendly over the weekends. So again, no real complaints yet, but people are starting to ask those questions.
Great.
And again, I did get another question about when the correction to Baldwin Drive at Main Street is going to be corrected, and again, that is going to be after the holidays. You know, it is scheduled to go under construction when we do that intersection work. So again, just a reminder to the public.
Thank you, Joe. We'll do some skywriting perhaps in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, indeed. Let's see. Speaking of like road closures and things along those lines, I just want to say thank you to the Public Works Department and the Police Department for the unexpected road closure on Main Street Friday evening. Again, if it was up to the town, we would have certainly not closed the Main Street on Friday evening. But again, CSX gave us very little notice that they needed to do an emergency repair. So again, thank the Police Department and Public Works for quick action, getting the signs in place. We did have one bus that was reported could not get through to Oklahoma Avenue and make it, I guess, the normal drop-off for some of the little kiddos. So we apologize to those parents that had to go pick up their kids. The roads were open, it's just the signage was a little confusing. So we apologize for that, but good, quick action by the Public Works and Police Department.
For sure. Thank you to both of them.
Thank you again to both of those same departments for all of the work over the weekend. On Saturday, the Craft Beer Festival, again, it was a huge, huge success, and I'm sure our DSC liaison will touch on that a little bit. I did want to point out that the DSC did coordinate a food drive along with the Craft Beer Festival. It was, that was also a huge success. We actually filled the room or the kitchen here at the townhouse with non-perishables to donate to the food pantry here in town, which that delivery will be happening very soon. So again, just wanted to thank the DSC and all the community for bringing all those non-perishables along with them while they enjoyed the downtown.
And I want to thank Joe for trekking all of it up the hill with multiple wagon.
It wasn't just me.
I know, but I was gonna say, and also one of our, actually two of our Girl Scouts and their mother were also volunteering as well with all of the wagon rides.
It was nice to see the turnout, for sure.
Fantastic.
For those that are still interested in donating, obviously, our donation box is still on the side porch. There's also a donation box at St. Paul's across the street. You can donate monetarily online at St. Paul's website and also Impact Church website. So again, we still, I know there's rumblings that the government shutdown might be ending here pretty soon, but again, there's still people in need. So if there's anybody that still wants to donate, there's still an opportunity out there for that.
Thank you.
Then the last thing I have is just a reminder that tomorrow, all town offices will be closed for the observance of Veterans Day, and that we do have a Remembrance Day ceremony this Saturday at 10:30 on the townhouse front lawn. So everybody's welcome to enjoy that free event.
Awesome.
That is all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
A question for Joe. The question I get most often, the station.
Yes. So I know the, what we hope to be the last submittal to the Maryland Historic Trust was done today.
Okay.
So whether or not, or how quickly that review is actually going to happen, we hope it's very quick, but I know it at least got submitted today. So we're just kind of in a, you know, a little bit of a waiting game to see what comments come out.
Thank you, Joe.
Sure.
And pending approval, then the first step will be some demolition work to the existing.
Yeah, I imagine first is going to be the kitchen, the existing kitchen structure coming off the building, and there'll be some interior work that I'm sure they want to get started on as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for the ask, Councilman Keenan. Any other questions for staff before we move on to the treasurer's report? That's all you then, Jen, please. The microphone for us. Thank you.
So I'm here to present October 2025 treasurer's report. In October, we received $658,000 in property tax revenue and $25,000 in income tax revenue. As usual, our largest expenditures was the employee salaries, but we also had some public works and police vehicles that needed some repairs. So you'll see them being a little elevated this month. Still engaged in auditing. I'm hoping to wrap that up by the end of the month and be able to give the report out in December like we have done. And then this year has been great, on track, profitable to give back to our residents. And right now, our financial performance for October of 2025 surpassed October 2024. The main driver, though, was capital expenditures decreased, but that probably will change because we have Loyal Electric.
Yes, yes.
So yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No?
The only question that I would like to, is I have somebody coming today, so if I could come back up and stand and say something when he gets here.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Just give me the nod and I'll invite you forward. All right, thank you. That gets us to our public safety report. I don't see Chief down there because I don't see any white hair. Actually, I barely see very little hair.
Any duty, you February.
So here we are with the beard and all. Must be Bro Bemberg.
Down this a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to discuss the pub safety report for October 20 through November the 2nd of 2025. During that time, we handled a total of 438 events. Let's see, we had five assist agents, assist other agencies, 15 community policing initiatives, 25 foot patrols, 236 patrol checks, two suspicious situations, 36 traffic enforcement initiatives, five trainings, and two welfare checks. Of those, we had seven reports, and I'd be happy to discuss anything. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
So one question, 171, just if there's an update.
Yes. That juvenile was located and emergency petitions. So that was, that was a happy ending. Everything is as good as it could be there.
Thank you. So I don't have a specific question, more of just a, maybe a general education opportunity for us. Lieutenant, the difference between a patrol check and a foot patrol?
So a foot patrol is generally when we'll go and, if we have a power outage on Main Street, I would go and shag doors to make sure the doors were locked a couple of times a day, when we generally don't expect to have interaction with the public.
Okay.
Cooper Park, to lock it up at night, I call that a foot patrol. To lock up the bathrooms at the tower, that could be a foot patrol or a patrol check. To go out and walk the skate park after hours, could be a foot patrol. To walk around the middle school after hours is a foot patrol. The difference between that and a patrol check? A patrol check generally is just us being present and letting us be seen by the public. We like to call that being omnipresent, which means cops are everywhere. Flood a certain area if we're having issues with, say, the break-ins at the convenience store. I would, I would go up there and park from one side of the parking lot over to the old high store when that was there, just to make it look like we were all over the place, even though it was just me working by myself. Flooding a neighborhood that we're having problems with festering motos or loud noises or juvenile complaints or whatever, just, just to flood with a marked car so that the public can see that we're out there doing it. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, and it's very helpful. Thank you. Been meaning to ask for like 12 years, and I just never remember to. So this was the perfect opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else for lieutenant? Okay. Think you're free to go. Thank you, lieutenant. And I think now's the part of the agenda that doesn't exist where we call a treasurer back up to the podium.
I want to introduce everybody to my son, United States Army. He is at Fort Drum, and I think that this was perfect with tomorrow being Veterans Day. He is fifth generation Army in my family. So I just wanted to introduce and just thank all of our veterans, all of our active duty, all of our future duty, and I want everybody to meet my son.
And his name?
His name is Britain.
Britain, thank you. No, I think it's time to introduce better. Thank you. Yeah. I'm pretty sure your mother didn't tell you why she was having a.
No, I can do this a little more nicer.
You're fine, my friend. Now that's awesome. What a family tradition to uphold. Good for you and good for us.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our council and commission reports and updates. Is there anything to my far left from Councilman?
No, the capable commission meeting was canceled. We'll have another one adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
So there was no planning commission, but I do have something to share publicly, and I wonder if maybe I could yield my time and do that at the end of these reports.
I'll bring it back around. You sure can. Thank you. Anything from the council president?
Jen kind of took what I was going to say, as we honor the Veterans Day. Thank you for all those who have served, who are serving, and who will be serving. Thank you for everything that you do to allow us to do what we do.
That's the best psych out I've heard in a while. All right, girl. Thank you.
So nothing from the historic district, but just wanted to kind of just bring it to people's attention that last week, the commissioners voted on an ordinance for our area to slow development and pause, and the message that I've seen online is that they are receiving public comment about the deferral ordinance at this week's county commissioners' meeting on Thursday, the 13th at 9:00 a.m., just in case anyone wanted to share their concerns or find out more about it.
Thank you.
The next park meeting is Thursday, November 20th at 7:00 p.m. at the townhouse. And then just another reminder for Santa's arrival on Main Street is December 6.
I can't believe it's almost Christmas.
It's 3:00.
It's not almost Christmas.
But it feels like it. When Santa comes to town, that's just like the start of it, isn't it? I mean, I started seeing commercials on TV.
It's November.
Yeah. How about you, Councilman Keenan?
Tying into that, the holidays are barreling towards us as we speak. We've got the 12 Hours of Christmas presented by the Main Street Merchants on the night before Friday, December 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Santa will be strolling Main Street from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. I have a picture of him last year sitting across the bar from me at Beck's after he was done. We had the Craft Beer Festival this past weekend. Council President Carter, thanks for helping out as always. Great event, no issues, went off very well. The key to having people bring canned foods is to offer them Main Street bucks that they can then turn in for a cup of beer. That really helped out with the food drive, so that was good. And we also, speaking of the holidays, we have the 10th edition of our Happy-Thon coming up. Again, with the government shutdown and the general economy, we are now more in need, more than ever, for contributions to the Happy-Thon. This started out in, let me see, 2015 as a small initiative to help 14 families with the counselors at Piney Ridge Elementary and Sykesville Middle School, helping us identify needy families. It's grown to, last year, 65 children that we helped out, and we're open to be able to do that again. So you can either mail a check to Downtown Sykesville Connection or go online to downtownsykesvilleconnection.com and click on the donate link. Appreciate it.
And that'll be tax deductible?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, and we're circling back around to Councilman Schofield.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is something that I did share with the mayor, with the town manager, and also with the council in closed session at our last meeting. And then I had met with the mayor and the town manager separately before that. So today, I am formally resigning from my position as councilman effective November 16th. This is meaningful and emotional moment for me, and it's been one of several goodbyes that I've done over the last few weeks. Many in the room are aware that I recently retired early from federal service on Halloween on October 31st. I spent about a little over 25 years working for the Social Security Administration, first beginning in the Seattle region as a contact representative, and then moving to headquarters, and that's when we moved into this elders were community first, and then to Sykesville in 2011. But I moved here in 2008 with my wife Joanna, who's in the crowd, and my daughter Susanna and Phoenix. And this has been an absolutely wonderful community, as all of us know. We're all a little biased, but why we moved here is because of the amazing schools, a little less tax burden, and, you know, some other reasons, being close to work and those sort of things. I recently accepted a new opportunity in Manhattan with a nonprofit focused on preventing homelessness, and that would require me to relocate. I want to share that as I sojourn on to the next chapter in my life, serving others will continue to be at the heart of my journey, just in a new place and in a new way. And if I may, I'm going to take just a couple more minutes and reflect on how I got here as a council member, because I want to encourage those in the community that sometimes when you finish dead last, that can just be a beginning. I grew up wanting to be involved in public service and in community leadership. Politics always interested me, and I remember talking to my grandma about it at her card table. We would, we would sit at a card table and watch Wagon Train and Bonanza of all things. And I told her after a Ronald Reagan speech that I really wanted to get involved in politics someday. She, she had a lot of belief in me. She said, "You can do anything you want. Just don't get into politics." Years later, people in this town encouraged me to run for council, believing that my leadership experience at SSA would be, serve Sykesville well. And so I stepped forward, and in the 2017 election, which there's still a couple people that were in that election, I came in dead last. There were six people running for three chairs, and I came in sixth. And honestly, it was a very humbling opportunity for me. I'm not sure if you know it or not, but those results get posted not only on the town building, but in the paper, and people like your mother, actually, like my mother, actually watch and look at those sort of things. So she got to see that her son was dead last. But instead of seeing that as a, that defeat as rejection or failure, I did see it as a chance for learning and an invitation to do more listening and learning. So I joined the planning commission in August of that year. I volunteered in the town. I hadn't done very much of that up until that point. And I supported the town however I could, and what that did was it taught me about the special things about this community. And I'll give you a little spoiler alert. The, the things that are the most special about this community are the people. Two years later, when another seat opened, I ran again, and this time, the town residents entrusted me with the honor of serving. Since joining the council, I've been fortunate to continue on the great work of those who came before us. Today, Sykesville is a thriving community. Businesses want to come to our town. Home values remain strong. Our Main Street program is one of the most admired in the country. Our town staff, our council members, our merchants, our residents, volunteers make this community a truly vibrant one. We've stood together through a pandemic. We built on the reputation as a caring, resilient, and proud small town. Our future is bright, and despite what goes on around us, we are a resilient enclave, and I specifically picked that word enclave, Mayor, because of your influence to be modeled by other communities, not only in our county, our state, but around the nation. You might say, "Well, how does that happen?" It's because of the very special people in the community. Our community is diverse in thought. Most people maybe not know this, but we're very evenly split among conservatives, moderates, and progressives. And despite our ideological differences, what remains the same, and something that I would learn sitting in this chair, is that we all want the same types of things. Good schools, good jobs, safe streets, a peaceful town, a strong sense of community pride, and the ability to enjoy the people we love in a place that we love. Sykesville is not perfect. No town is, but we are striving. We have hope. And our future is bright because of the people who call it home. I will say, as been one of my greatest privileges, to be a part of that progress, to everyone who's trusted me, challenged me, supported me, or simply cared enough to show up, and there's some in the audience that are doing that, whether you're serving our nation or have served our nation or have been of support to me. Public service is an honor. It's not a right, and I've never taken that for granted. Before I close, I want to recognize, this, this might be a little hard for me to do, someone who may be joining us virtually from England. It seems a little strange. Why would someone be doing that? Well, it's my daughter Susanna. She makes it to maybe 50%, maybe more. She'll correct me later, of our council meetings. I grew up wanting to be involved in public life, and I never imagined that the experience would inspire you to consider a life of service as well. So seeing you think about public leadership fills my heart with pride. As you ponder your future, always remember to lead with humility, with courage, and compassion. And always remember that one small act, wanting to get up and speak again as our treasurer did tonight, can spark a lifetime of purpose. Thank you all. It's truly been an honor to serve with you. We haven't always agreed on everything, but it's that richness of diversity that's made us strong together. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'm going to miss your never-ending questions.
Not all the time.
I'm just hoping the person that sits next, that takes your place is less eloquent than you, because I can never follow up.
Well, this is officially the fourth time I've gotten choked up over this topic, and, and all I can say is it's been an honor. Thank you.
And good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We have a closed session this evening. Hey, can you handle this down? Thank you. And that meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B, Number 8, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation, and, sorry, and Section 3-305B, Number 3, to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. Those specific items this evening are real property, consideration of purchasing property within town limits, and the second item, or the first that I read, is the pending litigation with, with Warfield. I guess at our next meeting, then we can talk about the process by which the vacancy will be filled here at the table.
We can.
Okay, and we'll, they'll do that. And I know that was the plan, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew that that was, that was forthcoming. So at this point, we're looking for a five-minute recess to begin so that the gallery can clear, and we'll close the door and go. so that the gallery can clear, and we'll close the door and go into that closed session.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, and that recess begins now. Thank you.